Ready, Shank? All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday evening, 6:30, and we have a Boy Scout troop here that is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we can have a Boy Scout troop, it's PAC number 139, they meet at Parton Elementary, we can have you guys kind of come on in now? Here they come? Come on up, guys. Do you guys enjoy the tour? Good. Everybody just rise, and we'll let the boys get in.
Scouts, attention. Audience, please rise. Those in uniform, please place your... Please...
It's okay.
Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Scout salute. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in the mission indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job.
Two.
Thank you, guys.
Scout dismiss.
Good job. Thank you, everyone. Give them a round of applause. The scouts can go home, the parents have to stay. We'll give them all a moment to exit. Chief, while they're doing that, you're back tonight. Would you mind?
That's a hard act to follow.
Can we do scout salute or anything?
What's that?
You want us to scout salute you or anything?
Scout salute.
Sure. Counsel and members of the audience, if you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we ask your blessings on the scouts and their families and all that they do for our communities, that you would just take and multiply their efforts, Lord. We thank you that we live in a town that we can celebrate their accomplishments and them and so many other groups and organizations. Father God, we pray for those that perhaps have suffered some economic setbacks or maybe some medical illnesses or announcements this week that have brought trouble to their lives. And we ask that you would just lift these folks up and comfort them as you always do. We thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you bestow on this community. We ask your blessings and your hand of safety on all our city employees and all that they do, our elected leaders, and that you observe and guide us through these council proceedings. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Chief. Moving along to item number one on the agenda. It is ceremonial items. We have none this evening, so I'll move along to our first action item, which is the approval of the minutes for our January 20th, 2015 regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and seconds. Any discussion?
No, sir.
No? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes from January 20, 2015, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number three, which is our citizens' comment portion of our meeting. I have one written request, but it's for an item later on on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience, though, who would like to address counsel? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting, and we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt consent agenda, moving item four and making it 5A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We're going to move item four to 5A. Any discussion? Everybody agree? All right. You all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We're going on to resolution number 2947-15. It was formerly item four on the consent agenda. It is now item 5A on the regular agenda. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a brief introduction on this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a carryover from your January 20th, 2015 meeting, and when the council first considered this item, you continued your consideration to tonight, and you gave direction that you would like staff to provide you with additional information as well as give you individual briefings. And the staff has been working on getting the additional information for you, but they have not been able to schedule the individual meetings because they haven't finished compiling all the information yet. So what we're asking for is tonight is that you continue it to a date uncertain, so just to give the staff the time it needs to put the information together, conduct the individual briefings, and then bring it back when we've got everything put together and get all the information out there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Councilman Shank, you pulled the item off. Do you have anything to add, other than I see what our recommendation is?
No, I'll take their recommendation.
Would you like to give that in form of a motion?
Make a motion to...
I think it's continue.
Continue. Did you want a date certain or a date uncertain?
I would say date uncertain.
Date uncertain.
Resolution number 2947-15?
Yes.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Councilman Shank?
Thank you, Brian.
No? Councilman? Deputy Mayor? No? All right. Hearing none, motion on table is to continue to a date uncertain, resolution number 2947-15 at staff's request. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our public hearings, we're up to item number six, ordinance number 1612. This is amendments to the Land Development Code, Articles 14, 6, and 18. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Groot, would you please read ordinance number 1612 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending provisions of the Land Development Code of the City of Oviedo, specifically amending Section 14.7H relating to changeable copy signs, Section 6.2, Table 6.1 relating to the Downtown Development District's Table of Permissible Land Uses, and Section 6.44 and Article 18 relating to the definition of attached dwellings, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and the correction of Scrubner's errors, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance accomplishes two things. It amends the Land Development Code to clarify the use of changeable copy signs. The council expressed a desire that changeable copy signs only be associated with freestanding signs. That's what this language does. It clarifies that so that we do not have any question as to whether or not changeable copy signs can be placed on a building. It can only be placed as part of a freestanding sign. The second thing that these amendments do is that it incorporates townhomes into the permissible uses of the downtown mixed-use districts. The city's comprehensive plan provides for townhomes at various densities throughout the mixed-use district, and this gets the Land Development Code in line with the comprehensive plan. It also incorporates... It brings townhomes into the definitions section of the Land Development Code. Tonight, the city council is asked to conduct a public hearing and to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, as Mr. Cobb did mention, this is a public hearing. I will open up that portion of the meeting. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address counsel on ordinance number 1612? I do not have any written requests. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1612?
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds. We will give that one to the deputy mayor. I think she beat you by a hair.
I'll throw it in.
Councilman Shank, anything?
Just thank you to staff. They did a great job interpreting what we had asked for, and they have a couple of... There's small little things in there, but they're very important. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
No, very good.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good.
Councilman Henken?
All righty. And again, I'll just echo what Councilman Shank said. Thank you so much for cleaning it up and taking care of that townhouse issue also, so we don't have to keep dealing with it every single time it comes through here.
With that being said, are there any other comments from counsel? Mr. Cobb, anything else?
No, sir.
Motion on table is to adopt ordinance number 1612. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number seven. It's ordinance number 1613. This is a comprehensive plan amendment for MI Homes of Orlando LLC. Mr. Groot, would you do us the honors of reading that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending ordinance number 896, said ordinance being the comprehensive land planning ordinance as previously amended, providing for amendment to the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use of approximately 6.41 acres described in this ordinance from rural RL to low-density residential LDR and conservation C, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the code codifier, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on ordinance number 1613, please?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request to amend the city's future land use map to change the future land use designation of approximately 6.41 acres from rural to low-density residential and conservation. This tract is part of a larger tract in which the east side of the tract is already designated with the low-density residential future land use designation. This will bring the west side of the tract in with the same future land use designation as the east. The conservation future land use designation is for the area that is in the Ekon Waikati Protection Zone. This is consistent with each of the properties up and down the river, and the low-density residential future land use designation is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations. This qualifies as a small-scale future land use map amendment, in which we have one public hearing with our PZA, one public hearing with the city council. If adopted, it will be sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity if there is no appeal and/or if the DEO decides not to review it, and it will become effective within 31 days. Tonight, you're asked to conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1613.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant here? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Allison Turnbull with Holland and Knight, 200 South Orange Avenue. We agree with staff's recommendation that answer any questions that you might have. Anything else, we would just ask for your...
Counsel, have any questions, Ms. Turnbull?
No.
And at this time, we may call you up after public comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. As mentioned earlier, I do have one written request, and the first speaker I have is Mr. Mark Jones. Good evening.
I'm Mark Jones. My address is 2601 Turtle Head Co. I have an adjoining property with what's asked to be rezoned tonight. I first want to say, I'm sure if you guys remember me, I came up here and spoke when they started to do Phase 1 of this development. I'm going to say the same thing now that I said then. I'm not here to stop the development. I'm totally a pro-development guy. I believe in responsible development that enhances the community. It does not harm its neighbors, and that's why I'm here tonight. I think I've got, and my neighbors and I have some genuine concerns about the design that they're implementing for this development. They have, and I have some pictures that I brought in, they have essentially raised this property about four feet above my property, and they've put in a berm that's about 7, 8 foot long that slopes down towards my property. I've spoken to the engineers. I know Charlie Madden, and I've spoken with Chad Moorhead. A lot of respect for those guys, and I've talked to both of them on the phone, and they've told me you're not going to have any flooding issues. My common sense tells me water flows downhill. If we get a major storm, 2004, Charlie, Francis Jean, if we get a Francis that sits over top of us for a number of hours and dumps 12 to 14 inches of rain on us, my property's going to get flooded based on the design that they're implementing out there. There's a solution. They could put in a drainage solution. I'm being told they're not looking at a solution that drainage is going to be... If there's any flooding, it would be minimal. Can you show me those pictures? This is after a small rain of about an hour or two. Now, to their credit, they have come in and they have sodded on top of this, but all the sod's going to do is make it sheet flow. When you have sand, it creates channels, and that's what you're seeing there, is the sand that's piled up from about a two-hour rain. I think there's another couple of other pictures in there. And where I'm standing, that land is about my chest high. So, common sense, water's going to find the downhill flight, and it's going to go in that direction. Again, I'm not here to stop their development. I just ask that as this project goes forward, that it's reviewed properly. Last thing I want to do, and I did it at the P&amp;Z meeting, I'm on notice, and I'm putting the city on notice. If my property gets affected, somebody's on the hook, and I'm coming after them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to address counsel? Seeing none, I will close public comments. Before we go on to the applicant, I'd like... Bobby, can you come on up for a second? Bobby, I know St. John's has changed a whole bunch of ways that we get to review things. Is this something that's under our purview, their purview?
It's actually our purview. Actually, I went out and met onsite with engineers as well.
Okay.
Looked at it.
All righty. So you're on top of it, taking a look at it, and ensuring that these neighbors aren't going to have an issue?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moorhead and I had a long discussion about it already.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Oh, wait. Before you go, any other questions for counsel?
Who determines how high it goes?
It's based on the drainage for the site and the overall site design. It's common. I've seen it several times before.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, does St. John's determine how high it is, or a combination of engineering that they put together?
Yes, sir. St. John's engineer for the site.
The engineer puts it together?
Yes, sir. St. John's reviews it.
Reviews it, and the engineer reviews it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
You know, I also have a lot of respect for these folks. They've been here before us many times, and they do a great job, but, you know, putting yourself in this residence and others, I've seen it, and it is kind of high. And how are they guaranteeing that his property's not going to flood? What's the plan? I know it's slope to come out the front and run into the ponds, but let's say this is all built, and he's got a big flood in his backyard. Who's going to fix that?
Right now, the way it's set up is the emphasis would be on the HOA. In the documents, we put emphasis on them to make sure that the tract behind it where the drainage is going to be was properly maintained at all times.
You mean the new developments?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
So the 48 homeowners that are in there, they're going to be responsible to take care of a flooding issue in Sanctuary?
If this, if the tract, when I looked at it, the tract behind it stays maintained properly, it should flow to the wetland to the east. Now, during a tropical storm, you know, large deluge, I mean, the whole city's going to have it.
Is it going to be a swell?
The way it's set up now, I looked at it, I personally looked at it, and there's a wooded tract in between both developments, 10 to 15 feet wide, and there is a small depressional area in it which looks like it carries to the east for drainage.
They'll have to have it surveyed and everything, right?
Yes, sir. To the wetland to the east.
They're not a way to level that and kind of make it, at least along those properties, level with his property and still accomplish it to flow, make it not so intense? I mean, it is pretty high. I mean, and if I lived there, I'd have the same concern. And I've seen this in a house that I've owned here in the past that had the same issue on a hill, and when it rains, it floods, you know? And it's a valid concern that he has and the other residents. I mean, you know, and I don't want to take away from anything that MI's done out there because they've done a great job. The fence is up, you know, the noise and all the things that have impacted have been addressed, but, you know, I'd have a major concern if I was this resident, you know? And I don't know what the assurances are, you know, but you can't blame him.
I guess we're going to find out. Does it swell?
Not at the moment, but there does appear to be a natural swell there. It's like...
Is that in the conservation easement that the Sanctuary has between the 20... What is it, like 20 feet or something?
It's 10, 15 feet.
Bobby, why wouldn't the natural topography flow towards the river, which is to the west?
The way it's set up, the way the grades are set up, I looked at them, it flows to the east of the wetland, about 100 feet away.
So a deluge is going to make a big puddle?
Possible.
Versus just flowing downhill?
Depending on the intensity of the rainfall.
Now, was that elevation changed by MI, or was that always the natural elevation of that conservation easement?
Mr. Mayor, I have to go back and look at the original survey. We'll make that determination.
Bobby, is there going to be a solution to this before they start building?
The way the grades...
A definite solution?
The way the grades are set up right now, it should flow. I went and looked at it.
But you say should. Okay, what if it doesn't?
Because I say should because I know what happens over time with human involvement, and sometimes the way it's supposed to flow gets disrupted. We've had many issues like that, and that's why I met with Mr. Moorhead onsite to talk about it, and how's it going to work.
I personally think that is a concern.
And I will tell you...
To just let it go and continue unless we have something to talk about and some conclusion of how to fix this and how to make sure that it doesn't flood the other neighbors. That's a serious thing.
They can always come in if we do the grading.
Bobby, you'd said you have an intervention about law, you know, so now that's the back wall. There's going to be a fence there, right? Is that where the fence is?
Yes, sir. There's a fence on top of the well, I believe.
Like where?
I'm sorry.
It looks like there's a line, kind of. I want to say estimate.
Not swell, but...
Counsel, we're asking Mr. Wyatt questions about their development, so let's keep it to what the city's responsibility is, and then we're going to get them up there to answer about their development.
But I'm just asking if he can answer that there's going to be a fence up there, is there?
There's a fence on top of that, yes, sir.
That we've required a fence up there, so there'll be a fence up there, won't there also? That's all I'm asking.
I just want to keep us focused.
Yeah, one thing I would like to add is the lot grades...
I'm trying to keep focused on this also, the comprehensive plan amendment change.
One thing I just wanted to add, the lot grades, we'll take the water forward to the street off these grades. So we're talking, really, this is the slope area.
Right, because the top is...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Wyatt on what the city's responsibility is in reviewing this? Nope?
Yes. One question. Bobby, I know you're in the hot seat. I may try to make it a little easier, but from the city's point of view, gentleman says if his lot floods, he's holding somebody responsible. This is all built, all these houses there, everybody's gone along their merry way, get a big rain, as he talked about, and his backyard is flooded. Whose responsibility is that to take care of the damage that would be caused and to fix the problems?
HOA.
So it's going to be the 48 homeowners who are in there that are going to have to deal with that?
Yes, sir.
If I bought a house in there and you told me that, I'd be really upset, you know? But that's not for you, Bobby, so you're fine.
Well, that's any development, isn't it? That's the same, any development out there that's going to be built, if that development floods another development, then that, somebody in that development, whether it's the homeowner who's specifically a lot, we've had this before, where certain lots or whatever, would be theoretically responsible, because we're talking legal now, that's really a liney question, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, the responsibility falls, they're engineering it, we're requiring them to do engineering work as best that we can and they can do to keep that, all the water that's on their property, as we was talking about before, remains or controlled from their property. That's what we're doing, is our responsibility, correct?
They're responsible to take care of their water.
Right. And that's, and we're overseeing and looking at the engineering plans that they're presenting to us to make sure as best we all can as engineers to do that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask Mr. Groot that question?
I don't think we need an answer to that at this time. Do we? Do you want to answer that, Mr. Groot?
I don't mind answering the question if...
Okay. I just want to know what the city's liability might be in a situation like this.
There's no liability for just permitting a development. If a development's permitted and it's a private system, it's private liability. If the development's permitted and it's accept the system, drainage system, or road system, whatever it is, is accepted into the city's system, it's city liability. I understand this is a private system, so it's going to be private liability.
To the 48 owners.
To the 48 owners, yes, sir.
There you go.
Thank you. I'd be, excuse me, happy to ask Chad Moorhead to come up and give you more engineering particulars, but before he does, I would just like to emphasize, we do have several layers of review that we have to go through and some very stringent standards, so I just wanted to clarify that we're not just guessing, and we do have engineering metrics that we have to use, Water Management District, then the city, and then also the Ekon River has its own protection basin standards, which are extraordinarily stringent. Also, we're nowhere near the flood plain in this area, so that should give everyone some comfort. And then as far as the technical way that we'll be attenuating for stormwater and drainage on the site, I will ask Chad to walk you through that because it's much more technical than I am, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Moorhead, Chad Moorhead and Glenn, 431 East Ratio Avenue. In your package, because we knew this was a situation that was coming up, I actually gave, fed it to Bobby, some basin maps that show what flowed to the north, what flowed to the east and west and everything before we developed. So, when we stuck a shovel in the ground, there was roughly 2 and 1/2 acres that flowed to the north through the lots on Turtle Head Co. I know this because I designed Turtle Head Co. myself. So, in the post-development, with that slope that we're talking about, about .2 acres, we're talking about tremendous reduction in what was previously going. And your question about how does the drainage flow today? Well, there's a ridge kind of between Phase 1 and 2. Part of it flows to the east to that wetland, part of it flows to the west, down to the Ekon, flow point down there of the ponds. So that's kind of how the natural... As far as who gets sued if the adjacent homeowners flood, well, if it's our HOA that gets sued, well, then I get sued. I can assure you that I don't want that to happen. My firm, myself, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen. If we were concerned about it, we wouldn't have the design we have. Happens on a lot of subdivisions. But the design is to bring all of the impervious areas that are in our site into our retention ponds, small time slope, dies downright. Conservation easement, 20-foot mark of the section.
Is the ridge you're describing the heavy line in the drawing you gave us on the basin
It might be. Are you looking at the post or the pre?
I think it's in both of them, actually.
Well, there's a, the phase line is kind of the jog line that goes through there.
Okay. That's not the ridge, though.
Well, it roughly is, yes.
Okay.
So half the neighborhood's going to flow into the one pond closest to the Ekon, and the other half is flowing towards the wetland? Is that what's happening on the post and the bridge?
Yeah. Now, there's a ridge that goes to the east and goes to the west, so in this Phase 2, when we come back with our site plan, soon, we'll see the retention pond that's on the west side, that's two.
Right, so the lots 37, let's say, I guess you've got about that line, 32 to 37, those five or six are flowing into that retention pond, and what we see built now is flowing into that wetland.
No, it flows into our site, into our retention ponds, and then it discharges into the wetland.
I'm talking about behind the fence.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
The pictures that we have of the sanctuary neighborhood.
Yes, yes, it goes down along the common property line and then goes to the east. And in phase two, it'll go to the west when it's done.
All right, so phase one's going to the east, phase two is going to the west, and that ridge line is that, for all intents and purposes, the dotted line there that says phase line.
Roughly, yes, sir.
Roughly.
Chad, do you have the soil out there? Is it basically sandy?
Yes, sir.
Or is there no clay in there at all?
This particular site has very good soils. Obviously, you get closer to the wetlands, you get in the lower elevations, they're not as good.
Right.
Up where we are developing on this site, they're very good, high base soils. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, counsel? Chad, do you have anything else to add for us?
Yes, sir.
Any other issues?
Not that I'm aware of anything that's been brought to our attention. We've looked at.
What about turn lane? What about the turn lane?
The turn lane? We've, we can talk about that now, we can talk about it at the site plan.
Let's talk about it now and then.
Okay. Now, you guys asked last time if we're into doing just the minimums, and that answer's no. But I got with Seminole County on what their requirement is. Their requirement on two and six-lane roadways is if your development generates 4,000 average daily trips or more, you're required to do a right turn lane. We are at 480, so we're only about 12% of what would be required. So, I mean, we're not even close to what's required for a right turn. We're not into doing things that aren't safe, but, you know, with it not even being close, that's why it's not done, because it's really not even close to be also called Stand Man with DOT. They're pretty much along the same lines as Seminole County. That's where the county got their requirements.
So even though this subdivision is not generating the trips as a sanctuary or blivoak or riverside out there, which all have right-hand turn lanes, for me, just my thought, and I hear where you're going, on paper it doesn't make sense, but what makes sense to me is the guy coming home at 2:00 in the morning and some drunks behind him, and he's getting ready to make his turn, and if he had his turn lane, he'd be a little safer. So, you know, to me, if one person lived in there, it would be warranted. I hear where you're going, but I just think, and I realize tonight is not the night, these two things, the approval or disapproval, don't hinge upon that turn lane. But I would just hope that you guys would think about it, because I think, you know, 48 homes, you know, a couple hundred people are still going to live in there, and you got this beautiful left-hand turn lane, you know? So if the left-hand turn lane is required, you know, it almost doesn't make sense. So there's not enough people in there to warrant a right-hand turn lane, but yet there was enough people to warrant the left-hand turn. I realize you're coming across two lanes and, you know, I'm not sure what it is, but I would just, if you could, keep that in mind.
We will keep that in mind, but as I mentioned last time, the right turn lane is a free-flowing movement.
Right.
As opposed to a stop.
Yeah.
And that's-
Yeah, I got you.
Well, it's free-flowing until you hit the gate.
Yeah, but there's plenty of stacking distance, 20 feet wide, there's, you don't see any issues down 434, right out here in front of all the businesses down there. There's very few right turn lanes.
Well, so you're essentially telling us, no, you're not building a right-hand turn lane, or are you essentially telling us-
We're going to continue to look at it.
You're going to-
I think when we come back at the site plan issue, we'll bring a traffic engineer in, actually discuss it, and look at it a little bit more. I'll tell you, we'll still look into it.
What happens if it's just something we'd like to see? And it's a suggestion to you that it would be a nice amenity to add?
I'll talk with MI Homes and-
Why don't you have that conversation before you come back next time?
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
That'd be good. Thank you, Chad.
Anything else, Allison? Closing the public hearing, we're going to move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1613.
Second. Motion second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Schenck? Councilman Breton?
I'm good. We're on notice, so I'd like to watch this in the future.
Councilman Hicken?
I just want to echo that, just, these issues, please keep, you know, it's very unnerving when you're a homeowner, and you feel like you're the little guy against everybody. And, you know, I can totally relate. I think I have a little bit of confidence of what you guys just told me of how this is flowing, but you can only imagine when you came home one day and you had these properties that look like this, and now he's here and it looks like this, you know? If it flows, it's great. And I think one thing to give you a little peace of mind, and I asked about the soil, you know, in the situation I had, it was all clay and it was a lake. It had the hill, but, you know, if you have good sandy soil, it should go down, you know? So we'll keep an eye on it, and you got to come back for site plans, so we'll check out some other things, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
All righty. Well, I guess you're all on notice for a couple of things. Right-hand turn lane, flooding in these folks' backyard. I understand, Chad, that you're putting your seal on it, you'll ultimately be responsible in the end. I appreciate how that works, but, you know, as was stated, if I was back there, you know, and I'm looking at this and what's happening currently, and I realize it's happening on raw dirt right now, and that always looks worse than landscaping, and you move the fence back, we put another seven feet onto the easement, we understand all that, but, you know, still, this has to be an issue that needs to be closely monitored. I mean, I have something very similar in my backyard, but in my backyard, there's a swell. So I have the swell that catches it, and then it carries it to the east over two more properties, then it empties out into the wetland. So, you know, my backyard, I can see the water sheet through the swell, from the swell it goes to the east. And Mr. Wyatt, you're absolutely correct. When folks put their fences into that swell, you know, and don't raise their fences up and they stop the water, you know, they flood their own yards. But that is something that we will have to watch, and I can assure you that the neighbors will be sending us pictures if anything does go awry, so. Anything else from counsel? Hearing none, I'll call the vote all in favor of the motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Going on to 1614, companion to this. Mr. Groot, can you read 1614 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 6.41 acres located on the north side of County Road 419, east and adjacent to Willingham Road from agricultural aid to residential R-1 BB, providing for legislative findings and intent, implementing actions, non-codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a companion ordinance to ordinance number 1613. This is to zone the same property with the R-1 BB zoning district. As we mentioned in the earlier presentation, the eastern part of this property is zoned R-1 BB, so this will bring the zoning for the entire property to be the same. Also, the R-1 BB zoning district is consistent with the low-density residential land use that you just adopted, and it is compatible with the surrounding zoning districts in the area. The Development Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Appeals Board both reviewed this item and recommend adoption. It's recommended that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1614.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Happy to have any comments for us?
Allison Turnbull, Holland, 200 South Moore Javon, Illinois. We have nothing further to add unless you have additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to open up the public hearing. Mr. Jones, you're requested to speak on this one as well? No, not at all. Just name and address one last time.
Mark Jones, 2601 Turtle Head Cove. To answer Councilman Brighton about the liability issues, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Groot. And, sir, but if the city or municipality has noticed, and you've been put on notice twice now, that a design that you're going to approve may cause a problem, and it does in fact cause a problem, the city can be held liable. Just want you guys to-
Mr. Jones, I just have one question I want to ask you. Right now, before this subdivision, you know, they even went in there and cleared, did you have any issues in your backyard after it rained, did the water go right down?
You talked about soils. Our backyard is all clay.
Okay.
So if we get a heavy rain, our backyard's already squiffed.
Right.
And I can't cut the grass for it.
So you're ponding there now?
If shit flow water does make its way to my property, it could have issues. I have a fence. When I bought out there, I saw the writing, and I knew that was going to get developed.
Right.
And what was going to-
So your backyard's there are clay now?
Our backyard has a clay base.
Right. Do you have any French drains in the backyard that run down into your-
We do. Our developer, I put a French drain right in the middle of my yard.
Okay.
Something that could be done along this berm. I like the, like the swell idea. Great idea. Something that's going to prevent it from coming this way.
Right. Well, they're going to come back again, and there'll be some other discussions.
I'm not here to stop anything. I walked down there today, I took some pictures, I didn't have time to get them printed. What they've done there with the sign and the fence, aesthetically, it's fine. I'm concerned about the design.
Yeah, I don't think they've added the landscaping yet.
No, I know, and I know it's got a ways to go. I'm not here to complain about the development. I just want to make sure that my neighbors and I don't have wet backyards or my fence gets washed out.
And we got your back.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. You're welcome. That was the only written request I have. Does anybody want to address the counsel? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Applicants, do you have a rebuttal? Anything to add? Counsel, have any further questions to the applicant?
No, sir.
All righty. We will close the public hearing, move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mayor?
Councilman Schenck?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1614.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Schenck?
I just want to say, you know, a lot of times you have engineers and people of intelligence, we have Bobby. I have confidence in the process, I have confidence in our staff and the abilities they have and abilities they offer to oversee this. I look at the confidence in the record of our engineering and how well we've done in the past and how well we've done in our water issues. That will keep control of it and will keep it under, and do the right thing. So I have confidence in our abilities, which oversee the abilities that Matt Morehead, and I have confidence in them, but I have more confidence in our fence and our abilities to oversee you and make sure you're doing the job you're doing.
Who was the second? Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I was. I agree with Councilman Schenck on that. I have confidence in the city and the developer, and I really have found that they do care about not intruding and hurting their neighbors, and they work with them, and they, if you heard, they are working on it, they're aware of it, they're going to work on it, and I'm very confident it'll be all right.
Councilman Breton?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Hicken?
I would just echo what my colleagues to the right said. Believe me, I understand the concern, because I've lived through it myself in my own first home here and had that issue, but I think there are some fine folks here who've been before us many times, and I think if there is an issue, you know, some consortium will get together and make sure. But having all that sandy soil on their side, that's why I kept asking about the soil, that's a good thing, you know? So let's, let's have the confidence that it will work, so.
Anything else from the counsel? Well, we do have a very good history of keeping the city dry, so let's not mess it up. All righty. Seeing nothing else, I'll call the question, motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1614. All in favor of the motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we're up to ordinance number 1615. This is alcohol beverage sales on Sunday. Mr. Groot, can you read that ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to powers during which alcoholic beverages may be sold and related penalties and remedies pertaining to code or ordinance violations, providing for a savings provision, amending section 6-2 and 1-13 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Oviedo, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for instructions relative to codification and the correction of scrimmers errors, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us on ordinance number 1615.
Ordinance 1615 is amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances, and what it does, it allows for the sale of beer to begin at 7:00 a.m. on Sundays. The city's current regulations-
Just beer?
Beer, alcohol.
Okay.
Sale of alcohol. The city's current regulations do not allow the sale of alcohol before 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. This ordinance will change that to move the time to 7:00 a.m. It also makes it consistent with the other days in the week. We're asked, tonight you're asked to conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1615.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, what's the rule in Seminole County for sale of alcohol on a Sunday morning?
I believe it's 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m., so we're just getting consistency where our merchants were unable to sell it, but somebody could drive half a mile and go buy it, essentially? Okay, we'll leave it at that. I'll take that shrug as a yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing for ordinance number 1615. I do not have any written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of counsel.
Mayor?
Councilman Schenck?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1615.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenck, you have the floor?
Thank you, you know, again, it was a small, it was a problem that some of our businesses were seeing, bringing up, so appreciate kind of solving that for us.
Councilman Hicken?
Chief, thanks for working on this. I know you're involved in that, and it just kind of brings us in line with the county and level the playing field. Good.
Councilman Breton?
I'm good, thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
As I mentioned, this just really puts us in a line, which is what was happening around us. I mean, personally, I'm not sure I'm going out to buy beer and wine at 7:00 a.m. in the morning on a Sunday or any day of the week, but, you know, to those who do, God bless you, and now you don't have to drive half a mile down the road outside of the corporate limits of the city of Oviedo. I would like to make one thing clear about this, though. The ordinance is written that the sale can only occur till 11:00 p.m., and the reason for that is that the police department actually issues a license, correct, chief? For the sale of, or a permit, excuse me, for the sale until 2:00 a.m., which follows, again, state statute. And if a merchant violates that permit, sells to minors or any other numerous infractions that can occur, they will lose their permit and only be able to sell until 11:00 p.m. So gives the chief a little bit of a stick when it comes to alcohol sales late in the evening, particularly with our proximity so close to UCF, so. Just did want to point that out. The Sentinel did a story and said only until 11:00 p.m., and chief didn't take kindly to the way it was reported. Got that, Tim?
Got it.
Okay, good. All righty, anything else from counsel? Hearing none, the motion on table is to adopt ordinance number 1615. All in favor of that motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, we're up to our first resolution on the agenda. It's number 11, it's resolution number 2950-15. Mr. Cobb, I thought I saw something about a request for another continuation on this item?
Yes, sir, we have a request for continuation. When you considered this at your January 20th meeting, you did continue it to tonight. Mr. Kavanaugh has addressed the concerns of the counsel. However, he's informed us that there may be other revisions that he wishes to make, and so he has asked that we do another continuance, but not put a date certain on it, to give him time to make whatever revisions he's going to make to bring back to you. And so I would just ask that you just continue it and not put a date on it.
Continue your resolution 20, so you want a motion to continue resolution number 2950-15 to a date uncertain?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to entertain that motion?
No, moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Hicken? Councilwoman Britton?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilman Schenck?
You know, we were talking the other day, we were all at meetings and stuff. When are we going to see a master plan? You know, looking at single pieces of a puzzle sometimes makes it a little more difficult to see the end result of the puzzle. And if you're looking at one piece at a time versus the whole thing and getting an idea of the whole and knowing what the whole's going to look like, it's a lot better than looking at one piece at a time and one piece at a time and one piece at a time. So, you know, we had one kind of or it was a sort of master plan rendition, but we don't have an overview of what's the end goal here. And I'm kind of seeing this coming to its piecemeal and I'd rather look at a whole and understand how these parts fit together. And that fits with the whole idea of how we, you know, we want to be thinking here of our land development code and how it works, that how does this all fit together and how does one building complement the other and go with the other. But as we keep putting a piece down and putting a piece down, we don't get a full view of what the end result's going to look like. And that's our masterpiece.
Mr. Cobb, any indication from Mr. Kavanaugh? I thought I saw some email traffic going back and forth.
I would like to just say you're preaching to the choir. We'd like to have the same thing. I would love to see a master plan. It seems each week that changes. Yes, there is a rendering and that was the road we thought we were going down, but then the course changed. Now, I don't know how much the course is going to change from that last rendering, but we too have been asking for that. We feel that's better. We do have, the emails that you were talking about was a discussion of a comprehensive sign plan. And that has been a long time in the works. I think is a good way to put it when you say, Dr. Correa.
I mean, especially with that coming from interrupt, you know, especially with that, looking at that, you know, I'll use that as an example. You know, I don't think I've come to you and talked to you about the sleeve cover on the big huge sign that I don't think anybody here probably ever anticipated when we approved that you could sleeve and have signs on top of signs. What do they call them?
Parasite.
Parasite signs, that we'd see a 65-foot sleeve kind of thing be put upon a 65-foot sign. That's a beautiful sign that we loved and approved and said, yes, this is exactly the kind of thing we would like to allow you to have and then have it sleeved over. So again, it's hard when you're looking at pieces to see the whole. As land use administrators, can't we just keep saying no until we see a master plan realistically?
With findings and rationales as to why you're disapproving it, approving an item relative to competency, plan consistency, or noncompliance with a land development code provision, the answer is yes. But you have to make those findings and come to those conclusions.
Well, again, I'm going to say almost everything that's come to us so far is nonconformed. So there's a nonconformance in virtually everything that's come to us.
There's been numerous deviations.
So numerous deviations that have come forward. So there's a deviation, that's a noncompliance, so that would be... But I just, again, without seeing the whole, I'm getting kind of piecemealed to death and I have been for a while and said that in other ways. But, you know, we've got a big, large chunk that's still remaining. And if we put these pieces together, I don't want it to look like pieces that are maybe south of us or other places, as we all say, anywhere USA or very close to us, USA. That isn't the way we want this place to look and end up looking that way because if you're not looking at the big picture, you're just looking at a piece. Suddenly, it ends up looking like those other places that are right around here. I'd like to see a master plan personally. I know we ask for a lot of things of people who walk in this place and we've been asked a lot from the developer across the street and put in a lot of our people's money. So I'd like to say, we need a master plan.
Mr. Cobb, is the land development code for Oviedo on the park, doesn't it already have a master use plan?
It does.
Didn't we spend three years doing that?
Yes, sir.
So is there a requirement to... I mean, I'm not disagreeing with Councilman Schenck. I'm just trying to get us there. Is there a requirement in there for a master plan? Because quite frankly, the building coming for us is the completion of phase one. I mean, that's what this is. Phase two hasn't started yet.
You have a master land use plan that has a development agreement.
Right. That runs with the land.
It runs with the land. And all development within that master land use plan has to be consistent with it. And so basically, the master land use plan, all development after that can be done through a site development or a site plan. It does not require that we look at the whole, that whole quadrant at one time. He could come in and he could legally, I guess, and do it site by site. I agree with Mr. Schenck. I would much prefer to see, just because of the type of development that is. It's not your standard suburban shopping center or suburban neighborhood or anything like that. It's different.
Yeah, but the master land use plan addresses that, that it can't be that.
Yes, it establishes the densities and intensities of use in the property.
Usually maximums, though, right?
I'm sorry?
Maxims?
In this case, it's minimums. And so it, everything that comes after, you don't have to do a master plan for. You can do site by site. You can do that. I share your frustrations. I really do.
But to go along, we've, some of the pictures that have been proffered have looked like other places that we don't like. So could they fit, did those pictures technically fit into the agreement, you know, the land use? And they just didn't fit the look that we were really looking for.
They do fit the land use, yes.
Yeah. So I understand what you're saying.
We haven't approved any yet, though.
They haven't come forward. They haven't...
Chicken in the egg.
You know, but again, it's, you know, I understand there is a, you know, we may not be here and it may be 10 years from now that that finally gets, you know, what phases, but having the overall design what it should be. We need to be looking at that repeatedly as we go along. Again, it's piece by piece. You know, this changes every time. These pictures change every time slightly and not every change is showcased. You have to look for every change to go, huh, that was a curve, now it's a straight. That's not ready. You know, there's certain things that change. You have to really look into to find versus, yes, architecture, it looks nice, but it did change from one picture to the next. The first set of pictures didn't even have the south wall at all. Then the south wall came in, looked like it did, we sent back asking for. Then it changed again, not just the south wall, but everything else changed again. And it becomes this, you know, you're looking at a picture 12 times and it's, you got to look at a picture exactly, go, wait, what was the first one? That was better at this point. And now, so it becomes this, I'm going to say game, but it changes every time. You're looking at 12 different pictures. And you have to make sure, well, what part changed and what part didn't?
Mr. Cobb, when are we having the work session with Mr. Kavanaugh on the signs? I think that was March, no?
It's February.
Oh.
February 20... 23rd, yes, February 23rd.
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Mayor? Let's not drag this out any further. We have to...
I got a question for Mr. Groot, if you...
Sure.
...mind. Mr. Groot, we talked about these deviations that have been coming through. Do approving the previous deviations, does that set up any kind of precedence that would prevent us from denying a deviation in the future?
No, sir.
Okay, so each of those stand on their own? We can decide up or down individually on those?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so 23rd, Mr. Kavanaugh is coming in here with the signed package. Can you please convey to Mr. Kavanaugh that the general feeling of the councils, we'd really like to see something that starts to show us how this is, what the vision is. If it's not, come on up to us.
Especially with the signs, too, because again, you don't picture not seeing what things are going to look like, approving how signage is going to look in things that don't exist and there's no images or conceptual of. It's kind of very hard.
There is no signed package at all for down there. Don't forget. We never approved one.
Good evening. That's what I wanted to add because we have been asking Mr. Kavanaugh for a site plan that the master land use plan doesn't require, but we wanted to see. And he's also proposing signage for the whole area. So he's bringing a site plan with the master land signage plan for Oviedo on the park. So we have a new, he just submitted today for me a preliminary plan, the sign and the site plan. If the site plan is going to change or not, I don't know, but it's a new site plan. So it's the whole.
Could you send that out to us so we can see what he has in mind?
Sorry?
Can you send that out to us so we can see what he has in mind, the preliminary plan you were giving today?
I can, yes.
Or just, you know, put it up on the internet, whatever it is.
We haven't finished our review and we're going to meet with Mr. Kavanaugh tomorrow morning. So I'll give you our first impression, but we need to...
How about you post it up after your review and your comments?
Okay.
So we can see where you're going with what he submitted. How does that sound, council?
I would prefer that.
Is that good?
Giving it to us?
Let them comment on it and then post it up. And that way, we can see what their comments were on...
When you say post it up, what do you mean?
Internet.
Okay, internet.
Internet. Or is it a big package? Or sometimes these things are too big to email.
Several, several sheets.
It's about 16 pages.
Yes.
Stick it up on the internet.
And this is the one that we're going to discuss in the work session. So this is going to be placed for you, I think, on the ninth of...
Yeah, but it'd be nice if we get a few weeks' worth of looking at it because when Councilman Schenck and I dissect the thing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something real quickly?
Sure.
Now, Mr. Cobb was telling you all that there is a plan that's associated with a development agreement. Yet, development can come in incrementally, okay? Now, it would be a legitimate basis to deny an incremental proposal if the basis was you can't get to the overall master plan because of this incremental approval, okay? And it's the burden of the owner, the developer, to prove to you at each increment that that increment will not interfere with the overall implementation of the plan. So although typically, you have to say the development's not approved because of section whatever of the code or policy whatever of the comp plan, it's a little bit different here because you're always comparing the increment to the overall plan. And there's a burden of showing you that you can get to the overall plan. Does that help?
Yep. Any other comments? Well, you know, just briefly for one, I mean, you know, what's up, the town homes, the apartments, the park, you know, have all been home run so far. So, you know, the wanting, the desire for the rest of it to be built, you know, it's never been the intention that it all just gets built and it's sit fallow and empty as others have. So it always has been envisioned to be incremental.
Well, you know, that was one of the first things that we, when we sat down with any developer, they said, what are you looking for? And we said, we don't want it to look like it was all built the same day. And they understood that that was part of building a downtown. This is one of the interesting things about being in the role of land use administrator. And that one of the things that we've been talking about as a staff is when we have a normal development project, we go through the review process and then we hand it over to you to approve. Well, as land use administrator, actually, you participate in that review. And so, yes, it is a good idea for, once the staff gives their opinions on things, to put it out to you, let you participate in it, and then convey that to the developer, you know, because you're acting in that role. I mean, that's how, when I served in the role, when I served in the role of land use administrator, they're not waiting to get the whole package bundled up and then bring it to me and say, what do you think? They're bringing it in on the front end. So, yes, it is good. And to, you know, have Dr. Correa and her staff go through the review and give you, here's what we think. And then, you know, ultimately, the decision lies with the council as acting as land use administrator. But you, as I said before, I share your frustrations. So...
Alrighty, we have a motion on table to continue resolution 2950-15. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, item number 12. Boy, it's time for a quick charter review. Mr. Cobb, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor. Section 3.11 of the city's charter says that we will review our, review the charter at least once every five years, or more often if the council deems it necessary. And that the council shall appoint a charter review committee to review the charter and to bring forth recommended additions, deletions, or other changes. The council last appointed the charter review committee in 2010. Now, the one thing that the charter doesn't do is it doesn't define who serves on the charter review committee. So council can appoint a separate committee or it can appoint itself to do the review. Tonight, we're looking for, we're looking for your direction on how to conduct the charter review in 2015 as our five-year requirement is coming forward to us. And if you do decide to appoint a committee, we would ask you to give us direction on the criteria for committee members that you're looking for. And to also to look at establishing a time and place for their first meeting.
Well, let's ask the first question. Does anybody think the charter needs to be changed? We have reviewed this charter ad nauseam over the last 10 or 12 years. So let's answer that question first. Councilman Schenck?
Now, Mr. Mayor, what I was going to say is, we've got to say to the city, we want to wait till after that to hear if we hear anything. I don't believe there's anything in my mind that I can jump right onto. But I figure, we've just got to do it in 2015. So we've got this state of the city kind of a feedback mechanism.
Okay.
We can use that also then to see if there's anything that would jump to that level that we can't, couldn't take care of, you know, a meeting that needed to go out to a vote or something like that.
Because one of the choices, if I remember in the past, can just be that the council's satisfied with the way the charter is and we just move on to the next five years, no?
You can appoint yourself.
We appoint ourselves, it comes on the agenda, and then we all say, nope, everything's great. Okay. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I personally think we should have looked at, just, I mean, they may not find anything because as Councilman Schenck said, I don't see anything, but it would be good to get feedback. And just don't know, somebody may see something that we overlook.
Time, staff time, money, effort. So you've got to be real careful. It takes up a lot of their time. A lot. I just, I mean, we're going to wait to make the decision, just food for thought as you go forward because we've seen them.
Right.
Multiple, multiple meetings. Mr. Groot has to be at every one. Barbara's got to be recording them. Staff's got to be here. Takes a lot of time and effort. So... Mr. Cobb, how about this? Send out the notes from the last review to everybody. That way, everybody can see what was talked about, discussed, adopted, sent out to the voters.
Do we have that information?
No, 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 just the last one. We must have the notes and minutes from that. And we don't need them all. We just need the final recommendation that was sent to council. It only had three or four things on it. And if I remember, out of the three or four or five, I think we only threw one or two on the ballot.
I think it was really to clean up. Most of it was, if not all of it, was clean up last time.
Yes, the big change in the charter was back in 2003 or '04 when the mayor actually became a voting member.
I was on that board.
Right. That was the...
Can we reverse that?
I know we have minutes. I know we can provide you with minutes, but actual notes and things like that, we probably...
Wait a second. I have to address my fellow council member. I will gladly, knowing what I know now, go sit on the end over there and just hang out all day.
Britton said we should reverse that. Yeah, I served on that in 2004 and it is a monumental task. It's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff. You know, I read through the charter today and, you know, for me...
Yeah, but then we did it like incremental. Remember, we did one and then a couple of years later?
One in 2002, that was my introduction to Barbara and everybody. That's why I'm laughing here because there were like 13 meetings and that's what I got introduced. It was like, everything had to be redone in one vote. There were like 20 or 30 people on that committee. It was utter chaos.
Yeah, and then we did that vote and then a couple, three years later, it wasn't the full five years.
Right.
We did another one because there were some things in there. Then we did the five-year one. Then we did another incremental one. I mean, I think it's been done four times.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I would just chime in.
But I understand the councilwoman's concern. So let's get to that information from the last one.
You know, there's only really one thing that's always, you know, kind of, you know, I keep thinking about on the charter is I just don't like the thought that there's an election every single year in Oviedo. That is a problem. You know, we have to spend, when it's not our turn, you know, if it's not Mike's turn to pay supervisor of elections, you know, the citizens got to pay $20,000 every time we have to do this. You know, Winter Springs does not do that, you know? But I'm not at the point where I'm saying we should put that out already. You know, we'll just do what we have to do unless you all felt strongly. But I mean, an election every year, you know, I think you've seen, and this is the, you know, the proof that I use, I think you could see what keeping people together in a good group does that we get things accomplished. You know, when you have constant change and you get people come up here and, don't kid yourself, it takes you, even if you're a smart person, it takes you a couple of years to finally grasp everything up here, how the staff works, how they work, how your colleagues work. You know, so that's always a tough one for me. But, you know, I'll leave that for another day. But I think our charter's in very good shape. It has been. I remember the one I was on in 2004, got a lot of things got cleaned up. And then the incremental ones, like you said, that we did. So I mean, I'm okay with just leaving it unless you guys come up with something that you think really needs some attention. I think we're in good shape.
Who was sitting up here when we got talked into the infamous bundling all the questions?
Oh, my God, don't even go there. Bundling.
Yeah, because then, remember that?
Then the next year, you unbundled.
Yeah, then that failed miserably. And then we had to unbundle in the next year.
Everything passed.
Except for the terms.
Except for the terms, yeah.
Yeah, everything passed except for the terms.
The terms failed because of the person asking.
Alright, Mr. Cobb, does everybody like Councilman Schenck's suggestion? We'll wait a month?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb, you'll get some more information for all of us to just look at, you know, maybe if there is a historical document somewhere over all the changes over the last 13 years. If not, don't drive yourselves crazy.
We'll see.
I bet you Mr. Groot probably has a good old marked up charter somewhere.
I'm stopping the look for it.
I'll bet you you can find the one, you know, red line from 2002 and so on and so forth, all the way through.
There may be something we can do through MUNICODE that may give us some historical information on it. But, you know, as I was telling Mr. Groot, my concern is that a number of these things may have reached their lifespan according to state law, which we wouldn't have them then. But as far as minutes are concerned, yes, sir, we should have minutes.
Let's just see what we can find from 2000.
Yeah, we'll find everything we can find.
I mean, that's probably still kicking around somewhere. Alrighty, so, Mr. Cobb, do you need any other action on this other than general consensus? We're going to find information and we'll wait to at least after the state of the city... we're gonna find information, and we'll wait to at least after the state of the city to bring it back?
Yeah, we'll bring it back after state of the city.
Okay, great. Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
One, two, three?
Yes.
Okay, got them all. All righty, that's the end of the agenda items, and now we're up to Mr. Cobb's report. I saw something laying up here.
Yes, sir, there's a letter on your dais tonight, Mayor, from HCA, and they have formally applied for their tax exemption through the city's economic development incentive program, and just wanted to let you know that we have received the formal application. We, Mr. Jones has reviewed the application and has found it complete. We are going into the next step of the review, we are going to ask the property appraiser to do a revenue cost analysis for us, which is part of your ordinance that you adopted the process we created. Once that comes back, then we'll bring it forward for council, you know, for council's consideration. But just wanted to let you know that we have received the application. I also have one other item for you today. Chief White wanted me to let you know that there is a deadline for submitting names for the veterans tribute, that is being constructed in Oviedo on the park, and that is March the first. So, if you speak with anyone who is interested in submitting names, please let them know that we need to receive the name by March first.
Can we get eBlast and all that fun stuff going on that?
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
The city's Facebook page, we'll share it around.
Mr. Cobb, who do they contact?
The best person is Chief White.
Chief White, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If you direct him to the website, says.
Mm-hmm.
We also have a, there's a application, there's an application also that they can obtain.
Yeah, you can grab it on the website, it's a PDF.
We have copies here at City Hall as well, so.
If you have a PDF editor, you can just fill it in, and then it tells you where to send it.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we've, we've got quite a few names, so we've been very surprised at how many we've got.
I thought I heard eight hundred, is that what? Eight hundred so far? Yeah, I don't miss any of those folks, you know, especially the folks for the reason why the memorial building was built. You know, they might deserve a special spot somewhere, that, you know, as a suggestion, you know, maybe at the head of it, you know, some little something.
Existing honorees, that, something like that.
You guys figured it out, you're all smarter than I am, but you know what I mean, you know, for, that building was built for the, the three young men, right, that were, five who were killed in World War II? Right, so you'll make a special section for Medal of Honor and things of that nature.
Oh, yeah.
Forgot about that. Excellent. Mr. Cobb, anything else?
No, sir, that is, Mayor.
Mr. Groot?
I'll pass this to you, Mr. Cobb.
Deputy Mayor?
Um, well, at the last meeting, I brought up wanting to have some conversation at the workshop about Oviedo on the park, and the fees associated with it, and just some of the, you know, details. So, I went with Mr. Drew, I mean, Mr. Drew, Mr. Drew. Um, we went to the park and spent a few hours there, and we really talked about several things, and we, we figured out that there were a few things that we needed to discuss. We, you know, just talking about things, we thought, okay, there are some things to talk about, so, but all in all, that park is looking beautiful, yep, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, so.
Can we bring those items up during budget discussions, maybe, since they're kinda dollar-related?
They're, um, well, we...
I, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I don't...
I don't know, I think that's down the road, though.
I see Robin back there.
Big Robin, yes, from Robin, a big yes.
That was a heck of a yes bobblehead back there.
Can I ask when that is, when that workshop is?
March, March 30th.
March 30th, okay.
Okay. That's up to the councilwoman, it's her item, and it's just a suggestion.
No, we, we can wait. I see Robin back there shaking her head, yes, yes, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Some of the things we're working on as we talk, you know? And that's it for my report.
There you go. Councilman Britton, you're up.
Couple quickies here, those are Calno meeting on Wednesday evening, Mr. Groot, I just sent you the agenda, so if you could join us, I'd really appreciate that. Uh, we're having an emergency CSBG meeting on Thursday, and that's really just to approve their, their new contract for this year, they didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so they're, they're having it this year. And I'll wrap it up with kudos to Drew and, uh, Mr. Beavers, and the Leadership Seven, they put out a really great gala for their fundraising project the other night in Sanford. Drew got some ideas and some entertainment for the, for the arena, for our...
Amphitheater.
And, so, good job, Drew, I thought, I had a good time, and I thought you guys did a great job with that, that event.
What's up with Calno, is it surviving?
Yeah, Ronnie's gonna go and mentor us.
Oh, okay.
And the last thing was, we, a couple of us were able to enjoy the new restaurant, Divine's, over in the public shopping center over here, and we had a really good time, and it was, it's, they've done a really good job with that, and, uh...
It's busy.
If you get a chance, go, go in there, the food was really good, and, and a couple of young UCF grads in there, with a lot of energy and a lot of good ideas, so we had a good time over there, so, that's all I have.
Great. Uh, my report, I'm gonna piggyback off of that, I took Debbie there for her birthday yesterday for brunch, and it was really nice, so, they are, they are definitely doing a good job, and they are, are definitely very pleased with the welcoming that they've gotten in the community, so let's see if they can keep it up over there. Chief and I were at the president's HOA meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that, that one was actually pretty well-attended and went pretty well, so, a lot of good information gets bantered back and forth, our very own Drew out front here was the chair of that meeting, I believe, correct? Did they, like, just default you in charge of the whole thing from now on?
Yes.
I don't think you're aware of that yet, but I think they did, but anyway, I was out at the sanctuary last week, chief and I again, for the state of the city. I was able to do the state of the city at a reasonable time and get out, chief, I understand you were there till about 10:30, and I understand the board was there until, what, about midnight by the time it was all done?
Yeah, and the document out.
Well, congratulations to all the new board members out in the sanctuary, and anything that you need from any of us, just send us all an email up here, and we'll see if we can answer the question for you. Cops and Cars was out at the mall, very rainy and windy start, but, boy, did it turn out to be a beautiful day. The crowd picked up, the cars came out, and I think everybody had a great time. Past Saturday, I was at the Central Florida Urban League Dinner with Wendy Brandon, CEO of Central Florida Regional. She actually got an award for empowerment in healthcare from the organization, and there were four awards given out this year in different empowerment, they were calling them, and Wendy was chosen for healthcare, so she was very, very proud of her, her award, and we got to talk a bit about all their different plans for the site over here, and that should all start to come into us, I was told, plan-wise, over the next six months, so staff is gonna be hit with a lot of stuff from them. Uh, they're working their way through ACHA right now, so I guess it's a laborious process, chief, I was told by her?
Very cumbersome.
Yes, very cumbersome. Finally, Councilman Schenk did mention the public state of the city, that is all set for March 10th, 6:00 PM start with a public safety demonstration, 7:00 PM, we will start the state of the city. Mr. Cobb and I met with Oviedo High School, the principal, and some of the others who are involved in the production of it on, last Thursday, was it, Brian?
Yes, sir, last Thursday.
And I, I must say, Oviedo High School is very excited to host this, we're gonna do it in their auditorium. Uh, their auditorium holds about 800 people, they're going to have the AV classes completely involved, and their production crews completely involved. Mr. Cobb just couldn't emphasize enough to them, and myself as well, that this is really their production, we're gonna let them run with it, and, you know, we'll provide the PowerPoint, they're gonna add all sorts of graphics and stuff to the PowerPoint, make it really jump and spin, and, who knows, who knows what the kids will do, but I think it'll be a great exercise for them, and, you know, hopefully it'll be well-attended. This is, as I have mentioned to a few folks, and I know we all had a discussion, this is really the first time that we've done one like this, where it's just been for the public rather than me going out to a, a group, so it'll be interesting to see how it's received. The public safety department's gonna be out there with all their new toys, you're gonna have your new chargers by then?
I hope so, sir.
All righty, that'd be nice for everybody to see the new chargers. Uh, I know the, the fire truck, the ambulance, the, everything else will be out there. Drew, you're putting something together in the lobby on Oviedo on the park, I've been told. Chief White's gonna have something on the Veterans Memorial, be too late to collect names at that point, but be nice if folks can see something, but we will obviously have it up in the PowerPoint. The high school is going to have the refreshment stand open, and they're bringing out food trucks for folks, so, though they figured it was, you know, six o'clock, could be dinner time, folks can get something to eat, so, we'll, we'll see how that all turns out, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
What is the date of that one?
March 10th.
March 10th.
Uh, 6:00 PM, the public safety demonstrations will start, the dogs, they're gonna have everything out there. Well, you can leave those two canines at home, just bring Bailey, she's friendly at least. And, 7:00 PM is when we'll be looking to kick off the actual state of the city. Gail is working on a flyer for us all right now, that she promised me she would have ready this week, that she will get out to us, so we can start to push it out to all of our different email list that we may have. So, by the end of this week, the PowerPoint, we should have finished, the third week of February, I think, is Gail's timeline, her grandson's coming into town, she's taking a couple of days off, so we have to have it done by then. If anybody has any suggestions on what you'd like to see added to it, just send an email up to Gail, and just CC me on it and Brian on it, so we can start to get some of that data together. The new PowerPoint, the one that her and I did for the sanctuary, was an updated one, and I think it was pretty well-received. It was a little bit updated, it was my dry run, you guys were the dry run for it, as I told you when I started it that night, just to get a flavor for some of the new slides, and some of the new slides were, I think, very well-received, because a lot of the new slides show some of the history of why we're, where we are, particularly with infrastructure, so it helps answer, I think, a lot of questions. But anyway, so, council, if you have anything, please send it in. With that, end of my report, we're going to Councilman Schenk.
I, uh...
All righty, good, Councilman Hankin.
Talking to somebody from Oviedo High School, and their, their comment was, the mayor wanted something like The Wizard of Oz, Into the Woods, Les Mis, and Rocky, that was the production he was looking for.
How'd you know?
Well, combined, it's one, that's like I said, the feedback of that was, was all of that one.
Did they get the Cirque du Soleil performance too?
They didn't mention that, I was figuring, you know?
They're gonna have out, I didn't even mention that, they're gonna have their, they're gonna have their band out, not the whole band, right, the jazz band.
Jazz ensemble.
They're gonna have their drum line, they're gonna have, um, uh...
National anthem.
Right, national anthem for the ROTC, somebody do the national anthem, ROTC come in for the pledge, and the, and the posting of the colors, but Mr. Ty, Tygers, right, Joe? He was so excited, him and his, and his team, when we sat down with them, I mean, they were just, they had, you could tell they had put some thought into this, and...
The TV guy was nervous.
Yeah, the TV guy, yeah, he was going, "Oh, they're gonna livestream the thing."
Well, they were discussing it, that's not been made yet.
Right. They're gonna, they're gonna make it into a video, they're gonna, it's, who knows? It's, they were getting real excited.
Good.
They're, they're thinking bunting and flags, and they're, they're showing...
Again, Rocky, you can see him coming in.
They're showing me in the, in the theater where the best place to stand is, they're like, you know, you really wanna be here, because you can interact with the audience, they're gonna have, they're gonna set up a couple of screens on the floor, so I can see the PowerPoint that'll be behind me.
You're delivering it?
You wanna do it? You can glad, you can gladly do it.
I'm just teasing you, that's your permanent job for life.
Thanks.
Cops and Cars was very good, chief, yeah, that car, those two chargers are gonna look awesome, I saw the UCF ones out there, they were showing them off, and very, very proud of the, the look and the, and the light package that was involved with them, the turn signals, the trunk area, looked very, very good, there'll be some very nice cars.
What color are they? Right.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we had an employee luncheon, a couple of us were at a few weeks ago, recognizing our Player of the Quarter and longevity awards, and that was very nice. And I was wondering, talking to somebody, I saw somebody today, and they were headed up to Tallahassee, it reminded me to do some lobbying, and I was wondering if we were going to, if, if our lobbyists had scheduled us anything, or thought of anything, we had talked about it last year at one point, possibly going up this year in some fashion, and I just throwing it out there, since that reminded me, so. I don't know if you wanna talk to us later on or whatever, but that's just, that's throw out, touch things with them, see...
Yes.
Because I know, I said it's, they're getting into it up there, and he was going up for a couple of days, right?
We really should be going.
Excuse me, Steve.
Very soon, yeah.
Brian, I sent you something on a pension reform bill that was being considered, did you get a chance to look at that? I don't know if I sent it to the rest of the council.
I, I forwarded it on up to the lobbyist, and I got a, I got a report today.
Okay.
Haven't had a chance to go through it all, but I'll forward it on to the council.
That's it?
Good job.
You're up.
Good.
End of your report?
Yes, sir.
That's our favorite kinda report.
Yep.
All righty, now, let's have a real, serious discussion. Who sits on the one-yard line and throws a pass with 23 seconds left in the game? All right.
When you got a tank that can run through walls.
Right, if you got a bowling ball...
Mr. Mayor, I got one more thing for you.
All due respect to the Patriots fans, it was a great game, they deserved to win. Yes?
These three gentlemen, I know at least one of you three gentlemen were retired military,